Everybody, we call this meeting to order at this point. Uh, Mr. Leahy, we have the city manager's briefing, COVID-19 update.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. I'd like to ask Dr. Demetria Lindsay, the director of the Virginia Beach Health Department, to give us an update on COVID-19 from the Department of Health point of view.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of city council. Our numbers for today in terms of case counts are 564 cumulative cases. 510 have been confirmed, 54 probable. We had 355 cases that have been released from isolation, which represents 62.9% of total cases so far, and 19 deaths, representing 3.4%. Since onset of testing in Virginia, we have done a total of 9,337 tests in Virginia Beach, and for the past seven days, 2.1% of those have been positive. And we are still working. We're beginning to start the process of interviewing contact tracers or finalizing selection of initial batch of contact tracers, and we'll be getting training in the Empitras region shortly. And I will stop there in the interest of time today. I have some other things that I will be following up on at our next meeting.
Yeah, Mrs. Henley.
Did you say that the percent of tests that were positive during this last week was 7.1%? Wow.
Seven-day average.
Yeah, John, Mr. Moss.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I just want to follow up on last week, and you probably don't have the answer yet, but when you do have it, I would be still interested in understanding whoever has that information. If you maybe could pass them on to me directly, I can contact them directly. I'm trying to understand, because I don't know anything, haven't seen it, but what is the modeling that they are using? And the data set? I'd like to understand the modeling of their projections, that's all. I asked that last week, but I'd still have that outstanding question. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, sir. Anybody else? Okay. All right, so this is Lindsay Henley.
I'm sorry, Dr. Lindsay, I'd like to respond.
Am I muted? Not sure. I will have more information for you later. It is the UVA COVID-19 model that is used, and it does pull from a number of other models across the country. Other models are looked at, but that is the state model at this time. I would remind you that models are less predictive about actual case numbers. It's more reflective, designed to look at, based on past experiences, how behavioral changes may impact morbidity. And those models do reflect that there has been a significant decrease in what was predicted to fit a peak, based on the social interactions that we've seen, such as social distancing and some of the other practices that we recommended. But I will bring more information to you in the future.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Good, Ms. Lee.
Okay, well, Mayor and members of council, now I'd like to ask Aaron Sutton, our director of the Office of Emergency Management, to come up and give you the Virginia Beach City Report.
Okay. I am going to just talk briefly about the city response operations. We're still virtually activated and continue to assess our city priorities and policies for reopening. We, Virginia Beach did enter Phase One, as you all are very aware of, and as Deputy City Manager Ron Williams will speak about, the beaches will be reopened on May 22nd. Excuse me. Our logistics team continues to work with all of our city departments and our constitutionals to provide necessary PPE to fill essential job functions and gather usage rates to assess future ordering needs. Right now, they're in the process of shifting from having 30 days or a 30-day supply of PPE, which, that's our goal, is to have 30 days. We don't necessarily have that in all of our PPE, to shift to a 90-day supply as we work towards reopening. We've been working very closely with our courts, who are trying to get open and getting them engaged and onboard and understanding the process. As you all are familiar, there is a, an election in, on June 23rd, and with close to 100 polling sites, making sure that we have the PPE available for that, and then with our beach ambassador program, making sure that they have the PPE needed as well. One of our biggest challenges is identifying a vendor for child masks, child-sized masks. That's been extremely difficult and something that we are continuing to work through. Just as of today, Human Services has processed over 5,000 SNAP applications since March 23rd. Norfolk Human Services is providing support to our Human Services as the building is cleaned, and they will be back to distributing the EBT cards, curbside, March 26th. We still have about 100 children in the childcare program, between 73 from the City Essential and 25 from Centerra, and parks and rec and schools are working to figure out what the summer plan will be as it relates to additional childcare and summer camp programs. Last week, the schools distributed close to 106,000 meals through its food distribution program, and it was announced today that the school food distribution program has been approved to extend through the summer, which will allow us to continue serving our underserved populations. So what I'd like to end on is just to give you the other piece of the city response operations, which is, we did have our first tropical storm of the season, our third, a small storm that didn't cause us much issue. However, we do have another storm that is coming, expecting moderate to major tidal flooding with two to three feet above ground of inundation adjacent to the Chesapeake Bay, and major tidal rivers beginning late today and continuing through at least Thursday night. Minor to moderate tides expected along the Atlantic Ocean facing the beaches. We're looking at wind gusts 30 to 40 knots with seas of eight to 12 feet. So we are under a coastal flood warning right now, high surf advisory, and we could see some localized beach erosion along the immediate coast. We could also see some widespread flooding from the rainfall that is expected, but we are on the kind of edge of the large amount of rain. To the west of us, they are looking at several more inches of rain, but just for you all, for your situational awareness. With that, if you have any questions?
Mr. Moss.
This is my one for the city manager. Are we going to have a discussion later today on the CARE Act itself and that money? And I know, I realize this is an agenda item about authorization piece, but just about the amount, how we're going to allocate it, how we're going to essentially control it. Will that be a discussion before we start spending the money?
Well, it, yes, sir, and it can be a discussion point today, either when you get to the item or probably under city council comments. David Bradley and Alice Kelly will be here to answer your questions, and you may, the item that we're asking you to approve does require that I come back to you with a plan for how it's going to be spent, and we certainly would like to hear your ideas from council as to what you think we should do with it, too.
I'll defer my comments at that time. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
That'd be good. Thank you, Mr. Moss. And Erin, when is the storm going to be hitting us?
It will start this evening and roll through Thursday.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Okay, any other questions? Okay, Erin, once again, thank you for your tremendous work you've been doing all along. Thank you.
All right. Council, the next up is a discussion of forward Virginia Phase One update, and although the agenda lists Steve Kovar first, I believe we'd like to switch that, and the presentation's actually set up for Deputy City Manager Ron Williams to go first.
Welcome, Ron.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. This is continuing updates for you on where we are on some of our recovery initiatives, and then highlight on the beach reopening plan, and then DCM Kovar will cover, will cover some feedback regarding this past weekend. So an update on some of the recovery assistance that you've approved, the EDIP applications. We received just over 500 of those to date. The applications are being reviewed, they're being reviewed for eligibility, and we expect that majority of those that are deemed eligible to be approved at the June 2nd VBDA meeting. Over the weekend, we also approved seven cafe dining permits, based on your ordinance of last Thursday evening, two at Town Center, the remainder at the oceanfront. We have three pending for inspections, and there, and then there are a couple other restaurants that we saw that we would like to offer the opportunity for them to get permits. On the housing assistance, we've had over 600 applications. The criteria that we established at the 80% of AMI, 86% met the eligibility. We've already awarded 132 that have been processed, and the average rent for two months' rent of those 132 was right around $2,400. And that leads into what you did bring up just recently. We're looking at, and DCM Bradley will be speaking to it when needed, the fact that CARES Act monies could also be used for both housing assistance and business assistance. Mr. Friedman, Andy Friedman will get, give a report through the city manager in your Friday package detailing a little more about the housing assistance applications, and then recommendations for that additional monies that I mentioned that are from previous years to current year and next year that could be applied to housing assistance. There are also some other programs that were affordable housing-related that we already had some of that earmarked forward, and we'll highlight that for your, for your consideration moving forward. As you, as you know, Governor Northam yesterday approved our beach reopening operating procedures, which he referred to in the Virginia Beach Access Plan. The mayor participated in his press conference in question and answer period, and highlights of the plan were, were given in the briefing, but they were, they only included some of, some of what the plan included, which we briefed you on last week. We have started to deploy this past weekend some of the collateral educational materials. You can see their poster on 19th Street, that's part of the education campaign. There in the middle with the purple banner, that's a four-by-eight banner. There will be 70 of those that are mounted to the railings on the boardwalk. There will also be on 20 towers that are actually on the beach, once weather permits that, and we will forward to you a copy of these operating procedures that were reviewed over the weekend by the governor, and then we finally settled on what the actual regulations should be. There's been question about what beaches. It's all beaches in Virginia Beach, and the reason that the governor mentioned First Landing State Park is because it's contiguous to our Chesapeake Bay beaches, and he asked if we could extend our ambassador program into First Landing on the beach front, bayfront there, and we are working through that cooperation with, with First Landing State Park. So the overarching regulations are really spelled out in the umbrella format of, based in, in physical or social distancing, and that is executive orders 55 and 61, which mention the six feet in between individuals, and then no groups of more than 10. And that's the real spirit of what we're, what we're going to be enforcing as we open up the beaches on Friday. Additional prohibitions will be posted with beach regulations, as you see the sign here, at all accesses, and then down on the beach with yard signs as well. And so first two items, we have the overarching ones with six feet and 10 people, and then the governor's team really wanted to emphasize some items that they believe that could create the opportunity for crowds to gather, and so they asked that we include no speakers, large coolers, alcohol, tents, or groups of umbrellas, and then no group sports. Now, we actually do already have local ordinances for alcohol and for group sports, and they asked that we work through this in a voluntary compliance fashion, and that's why we have the beach ambassadors for that friendly front line. We have, we've just had an interoperability meeting with the public safety team and the beach ambassadors and us to work through protocols for this upcoming weekend and observations that we had over this past weekend. Additionally, we'll have, will remain the maximum capacity are the public parking garages and surface lots of 50%. Of course, as I mentioned, we're going to have no programming or entertainment on the boardwalk or throughout anywhere, anywhere that a mass gathering could be generated, and beach playsets will remain closed. Lastly, we, two, two other items. Number one is we are, we have started to deploy our, we're open campaign. We are advertising, starting on the 21st, in 15 markets on digital TV and digital ads, and on 25th on linear TV in a dozen markets. These are all drive-to markets that are in North Carolina, Virginia, Ohio, and Pennsylvania. We also will have, this was a slide that Aaron Sutton showed you last week about the protocols we're working for, for potential city operation openings. There's been a lot of questions about parks, and I know that the city manager, DCM Chandler, and Michael have, have ideas about parks. Of course, our open spaces and our trails are already open, but what we mean by park amenities are skate parks, tennis parks, and some of the others that are consideration for opening up in Phase One. And now we'll have DCM Kovar cover highlights of this past, this past weekend from a public safety perspective.
Okay. Mr. Wood has a question.
But before you sit down, Ron, I just wanted to thank you for all the hard work, all the hard work that you've, you've done on this, because I know that you, you worked with the governor's staff all weekend long on, on getting all these things together, and I just really appreciate it. I think you've done an awful lot of work behind the scenes that have really helped us.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate that.
I have one question for you. Anybody else? Yeah, Mr. Moss.
On Slide 2 of your presentation, I just had, on Mr. Freeman gives his report, I'd like to know how many people of the 600 applications, because this is based on the region's median household income, not the beach, we have higher rents as a result of higher incomes.
Yes.
I'd like to know how many people that were made ineligible because, but they're within our regional, our city income, but they were above the median family income for the region. I'd like to kind of know.
Got it.
When people declined, who fell in that gap in between, because our rents are higher here.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Ron.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of council. Here to just give you a quick overview of the activities this past weekend, I'm sure we'll, we'll have some discussion about beaches across the city, but primarily we'll focus on the oceanfront. Overarchingly, the call volume was up about 15% for calls for service for the police department across the city. As you, as you can imagine, people were starting to move about. Our call volume has been down in recent weeks, but this, this past weekend, with the nice weather, people moving about, the call volume rose about 15% per the, the numbers I got from the police department. With me here this afternoon, I'm sorry, I need to introduce interim police chief Tony Zaccaro, he's here, as well as the commanding officer of the Second Precinct, Captain Shannon Witchindall. So as we go through the, the slide deck here this afternoon, if you have any questions, they're quite capable, probably more so than me, to answer any of your questions. So Friday, early evening into the, into the, early evening into the later evening, the crowds began to, to grow at the oceanfront, obviously. We also had two incidents that required a police presence in areas, other areas of the city. So that had a, had an effect on the, the staffing that we had at the oceanfront on Friday evening for a short period of time, until we were able to, to shift some resources. They can expand on that later if they'd like. So, so Saturday, as we all know, the, the crowds began to, to grow a little bit more, especially, excuse me, at the oceanfront and into the evening. So this is a, this is a drone screenshot from, from Saturday afternoon about 1:40 PM, looking north down the beachfront. You can see there's people out there, there's some pretty good social distancing happening, but you can also see on the north side of the pier, it's a little more congested. For the most part, people were compliant. They listened to not only the beach ambassador staff that were out, but the police as well. There were, there were no cases that people violated the governor's order. So this is, this is a, we've got a couple of slides from our oceanfront cameras. This is at about 11 o'clock on Saturday morning, and it's, you can see second and boardwalk, 14th, 17th, and 24th, so that'll give you some idea, timestamped of what was happening at that time. And then we go 1200, so that's noon, and then we go through, throughout the afternoon, as you can see, probably as, as we go through, a little bit, a little bit more folks gathered there at the oceanfront. So that's 4, that's 5:00 PM, and that's 6, 6:00 PM. Just prior to, to 5:00 PM, that camera is at 24th Street, looking, looking south. Excuse me, that's 31st Street, I think, Chief, right, looking south? Is it 24? Okay. So again, you can see into the evening, the crowd on the beach beginning, beginning to, to grow some more. We've got some photos, I think, in the next slide deck here. This is as we get into the evening. You can see the, the traffic starting to grow on Atlantic Avenue, to the point that at 10:30 Saturday evening, Captain Witchindall ordered a, what we call a flush of Atlantic Avenue. That's a technique that we have used over the years to move vehicles off of Atlantic Avenue. It gives our police department an opportunity to have a little, not only better control, but it takes people away from that, that oceanfront, Atlantic Avenue area. And then these pictures are just after midnight in, in the different areas. The one in the lower right is, is the basketball court there down at 4th Street, and you can see the crowds on the sidewalks, some of the parking lots, and the middle, lower picture is, is of the boardwalk. So with that, I've got Chief Zaccaro and Captain Witchindall here for any questions that you folks may have.
Are there any questions of anybody from public safety? Mr. Wood.
And I guess the, the one question is, the, clearly your photos do not match up with the photo that was circulated that the newspaper did. It kind of had a telephoto lens and made everybody look a lot more crowded on there, and frankly, it looks like that the, that the drone shots and the oceanfront cameras kind of show a different story. And my question is, is there a, any kind of security reason or any reason why we could not make these, these photos public immediately? In other words, during, during the weekend, so that people can see the, what it actually looks like?
Good, good evening, Mayor and council members. No, I don't see any restriction on releasing or putting these out in the public arena, and we can coordinate through, through the manager's office and the communication team if, if that's the body's wishes to do.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just think it's a good idea, because I think it gets, gets accurate information out there that, that, you know, without the use of telephoto lenses and sensationalism, and at least shows what's really going on.
I agree. Anybody else? Mrs. Henley.
What was the experience at the other beaches, the bayfront beaches and, and Sandbridge particularly?
So we had patrol officers in the bayfront, as well as Sandbridge, both on traditional patrol, as well as ATV, UTV. We encountered some crowds, we had some reports of large groups, large groups of folks bringing adult beverages, maybe playing volleyball. Officers encountered those individuals when they, they came upon them. We did not receive any resistance by anybody in any of the beaches. Our, our stance has been to educate, seek voluntary compliance, educate, and then ask them to comply with the governor's orders. Our officers are equipped with the details and are able to communicate that, and again, thankfully, we didn't have any resistance. We did see large crowds in some of those areas, but I think that's an example of the time that people have been restricted from the beach area.
Of course, last weekend, the beaches were closed, so this weekend, they'll be open. So what's going to be different from last weekend?
So I think what's going to be different from last weekend is the beaches are open. I think, as Mr. Williams cited, we are working very cooperatively with our partners and the, the beach ambassador program. We just concluded a interoperability conversation going over some of the finer points of the, the mission for the civilian employees, the beach ambassadors. We come up with a good plan on the communication and the messaging. The ambassadors have been given a little bit more guidance on how to interact. I think we also learned at the early meeting today that the uniform attire for the beach ambassadors is going to be delivered Thursday, is the promise. Those uniforms will be a high-visibility yellow hat and T-shirt, so I think that will also clearly help the beach ambassadors' communication message. They've also purchased some high-visibility yellow umbrellas, so in addition to the hats and the shirts, they will be highly visible and engaging. We've identified some parameters on how to engage the citizens, and we're working very closely with our foreign marshals' office to ensure that we have a proper footprint of persons per block as best possible. So I think the, the differences that, between Mr. Williams and what I've shared will, will help address that, those pedestrians.
Additionally, ma'am, also we'll have a, our incident, you know, event action plan for a holiday weekend. Police will be upstaffed a bit more, the lifeguards will be fully staffed, and then the ambassadors that, that Ron can speak to will be, be fully operational as well.
Well, I just want to make one very significant point. Last weekend, the beaches were open for exercise and fishing only. This upcoming weekend, you can actually relax and sit on the beach.
Legal.
So it's our job to enforce the fiscal distancing, but a very hard measure to, you know, to, to have compliance, especially when the, at a Class 1 misdemeanor level, you know, so they, they looked for compliance and they found that. And, you know, that's what executive orders do, and so now someone can sit down, and that's the one, number one thing, when the governor said, what do you really want? That's all we ask for, is that people can sit down, and they'll be able to do that.
Well, Virginia Beach has pretty prominently promised the world that we were going to have compliance, and I've got a feeling there are going to be an awful lot of folks looking very closely at what happens this weekend, and I certainly hope our people will, will recognize the importance of cooperating and making sure Virginia Beach looks good.
So, Ms. Henley, public safety recognizes that challenge. I think the beach ambassador coordinators recognize that challenge, and I appreciate the mayor's plea to the community to seek voluntary compliance, and we're prepared to educate and seek that voluntary compliance as best possible.
Okay, Mr. Belucci, and my apologies, I forgot to mention at the beginning of the meeting that Council Lady Wilson is with us virtually, so we're going to have Mr. Belucci and then Council Lady Wilson.
Thank you. I'd like to follow up on the ambassador program, because there were some, some ambassadors were deployed last weekend at every street at, along the boardwalk, and I think there was, I was just wondering if you could provide some clarity about what specifically their role is, and then what members of the public or visitors can expect from... from the ambassador program as it's expanded. Just a little bit more about the purpose and what the actual interaction will actually look like, and what it's designed to do.
So the ambassador program is intended to be the friendly front line for enforcement when we were able to open the beaches. This past weekend, we used an opportunity with an early hiring of 60 to start to get an understanding of the environment and start to train them, predominantly the supervisors, and then also kind of to vet whether or not some of those that were initially hired would remain on the team. They did not have any instruction nor were deployed to have any interaction on the beach. They will learn the environment and the accesses going forward. Their role is twofold. One is to educate the public at each access, and especially with the restrictions that we showed you on the signage. They'll basically be covering that access, not only at the resort, but then also the heavily-used accesses such as Little Island Park and on the bayfront. They'll be roving on the larger open beaches as bayfront, North End and Sandbridge. And then they'll also be posted on a roving basis in between the blocks at the oceanfront. They are that front line of looking at what we've established, a ratio per block of individuals based on a six-foot spacing. They will have the constant communication with both PD and parking, and looking at the densities. And they'll ask for that voluntary compliance when they see the grouping of umbrellas or the tents, or the lack of six feet or gatherings of 10 or more. And then they'll ask for support from law enforcement when not get that compliance.
Thank you. I really appreciate that.
Councilmember Wilson?
Thank you, Amanda. I do want to say my hats off to Ron and Bobby and everyone that has worked so hard to get our beaches open and our people at the resort. This is really big to get it open for the Memorial Day weekend. And our season is short, and it's very, very important to us as a city. So I was really, really happy about that. I wanted to ask about the libraries. Is there any plan to be able to open the libraries if people can keep their distance in sitting in places? And is there a problem with people touching the books and getting infected? You know, that might be a problem, but I was just curious about the libraries.
So Councilwoman Wilson, I'm going to ask Deputy City Manager Ken Chandler to address that.
Okay. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Council Lady Wilson. As we work on this, the libraries are actually working on their operational plans to open in phases. We are working right now under closure to actually retrofit and put Plexiglas up at our drive-through facilities. And we have that at Oceanfront. We also have that at Princess Anne. And as we're working through that, we'll have some other opportunities. One of the things that we've recognized with CDC guidelines, when we talk about the collection itself, when materials are returned, it is recommended that they actually be quarantined for three days. So working through those elements, we do want to get back open as soon as we can. We've considered some of the aspects of curbside service as a possibility, and will continue to work to create some service level. Of course, you already know that we have a lot of the online services that we continuously operate. And of course, for the visually impaired services that come out of Bayside, those mail-in services continue still.
Councilmember Wilson, do you have additional comment or question?
Thank you very much. Thank you so much.
Does anybody else have a question or a comment? Mr. Tower?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As a representative of the Beach District where the resort area is located, I just want to make a personal plea to the residents of the area, those who have frequent and easy access to the beach. This ambassador program is a key part of our being able to reopen our beach. But I would hope that all of us who live in that area would be ambassadors for the city and do whatever we can to make visitors feel welcome and look out for people needing assistance, whether it be a gentle reminder of what the rules are, or simply welcoming them to our city and looking out for, treat them as friends and family. This is an especially critical time to get our, off to a good start and extend our reputation as a hospitable and safe place to vacation for those folks who are out of town. So thank you for the opportunity to make that request of my fellow residents.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else at this time? If I can make a comment, you know, a lot of times as politicians, we're there for the groundbreaking and then the ribbon-cutting, but a heck of a lot of work goes on in between. And over the last couple of weeks, I want to, you know, especially piggyback on, you know, what Mr. Wood said with DCM, Ron Williams, you know, doing yeoman's work, just working a lot with, you know, the government, the governor's people, and then also Mr. Stiles working, and a whole team of people that I really think that, in speaking to the governor yesterday, engendered a lot of confidence in our city and the way we communicated and the way that we reacted. And, you know, and then our law enforcement. I think there was a lot of confidence that people have that we have the capacities to do what we said we could do. And Mrs. Henley is right. We have the onus of responsibility on this to make this. But then, when you think about the team, when you think about Aaron Sutton and all the people that have been working so hard to make sure that we are a safe city, that we're going to be the city that's going to be ready to be open, that's going to accommodate, and to come up with a plan that we did, I think is, you know, tremendous. And I think that speaks highly of us as a body, as a management team, on the workers, on public safety, and so many people that have come together to get us to this point where, you know, the governor put trust in us to accomplish what we said we're going to do. So I just wanted to thank all the people for their incredibly hard work. And, you know, the spirit of cooperation that, in talking to some of the governor's staff yesterday, it was there. And I think it speaks highly to many of us that got us to this point. I just want to thank everybody. Thank you. Okay, at this point, city council comments. Anybody? Mr. Rouse?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think we all know it's graduation season around here in Virginia Beach and throughout the nation. So I want to ask council to join me in a resolution I will be bringing forth next, I believe, on the second, the second. And it's really to acknowledge the class of 2020. We understand this is a very tough year. But we want to make sure that we kind of let them know that we're with them and that we understand that it's tough. But also, we want to congratulate them and wish them well going forward in their endeavors. Also, just want to take this time to acknowledge our teachers, our educators. They have done a superb job, and many of them, this is a huge accomplishment for them as well, for 13 years. They helped these students reach this point where they can graduate from high school. And throughout this pandemic, I think they showed tremendous resilience and, you know, being very innovative in the way they engaged our students, being very creative in ways, but also just showing up, you know, caring, handing out meals, things of that nature, and making sure our kids get to this finish point. And so it may be one endpoint from high school was a starting point for so many, so many other points in their lives. So again, I want to ask council to join me in a resolution I'll be bringing forth next week to let our, the class of 2020 know and the future kids graduating class that in June will be known as graduation month, and we celebrate with them. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments and look forward to your resolution. Mr. Moss?
I have two items. First of all, I know all of you have heard from the residents of the Thalia community with regards to the upcoming Planning Commission meeting on 27 May. And for, I understand, legal reasons, which I'll be asking Mark about briefly, they supposedly cannot expand the participation parameters beyond what their advertisement listed. That's at least what's being communicated. Clearly, the people want to participate in a much more robust manner than what that medium would have. So I know I've talked about this before, as has Councilmember Jones. I think that the community on this controversial issue needs a better format than just a digital participation format to express their views. Secondly, the planning, the staff recommendation to the Planning Commission has not yet been provided, because I asked for it when they got it, and I haven't received it. It is Memorial Day weekend. I'm sure that's what everybody will be doing over their Memorial Day weekend, is reading the staff's planning recommendations on the Thalia Wayside rezoning. Not. So therefore, having a meeting on Wednesday really isn't providing, or hearing and a judgment on that application really wouldn't be what I would call a meaningful opportunity for informed participation, to be kind. I understand we can't provide direction to the Planning Commission, but I would hope that this body would empower the mayor to express that. And I've heard some rumblings are going to defer, but there's a lot of people out there who are still calling us and sending us emails. And if that is, in fact, what the intention is, I know we've done this before. We've told people in advance that this item is going to be, you know, likely deferred, so that people aren't spending their family time on Memorial Day weekend trying to get ready to prepare to virtually participate. So I would hope that we could express to the Planning Commission that we could say something, they could say something, because it's their role, the chairman, to tell people in advance that this item, in fact, will be deferred. But I would like to know, when they give the advertisement, does the advertisement really, Mr. City Attorney, Mr. Stiles, prevent the board from having a more permissive and expansive participation? Or is it actually held to the letter of the actual advertisement?
Mr. Moss, that's a, that's a very good question, and the law is not absolutely clear on it. We are concerned that because it was advertised as a virtual meeting, because the commissioners will not be physically present for that virtual meeting, that changing the format beyond what was advertised could give rise to a legal challenge.
I appreciate that answer. I just want the public to know they know. I've shared similar things, but it's nice to hear right from the authoritative source. But I would encourage, and I certainly have contacted some Planning Commission members, but I would encourage all of you, hopefully, Mr. Mayor, I think it'd be nice for the community to know in advance that the Planning Commission's intent was to defer the item. So that's just my first concern. My second one is just something to make sure that the city manager is aware of. FEMA has put out a public comment, an agency comment, period that ends on the 17th of June. They're soliciting inputs on their National Incident Management System. It's their implementation objectives. I know this has, obviously, we certainly are, I think, would be interested in that. They're holding a number of webinar series. Webinars are being held on their new implementation plan that they're proposing. And if that wasn't on our radar, I just share that, because I know that's something that may have implications of things we'd like them to have in it, or also may have implications for expenditures that we, investments that we might have to make to comply with federal grants we get. And that was the extent of my comments. I'll save my remarks on the CARE Act to the agenda item.
Thank you, Mr. Moss. Mrs. Henley?
I had just two comments, too, on different issues. Of course, the COVID thing and the importance of our citizens helping us with the social distancing, not only to get the beach open, but to get control of this virus. And this 2.1% positive of the test was very good news. And I think, you know, we really need some ownership among our people and the importance of controlling the spread of this for a lot of reasons. So we can enjoy the beach, so our businesses can get back into business. But thinking ahead to whether or not these kids are going to be able to go back to school next September, that's a pretty big thing. And I think we've all come to appreciate learning being able to happen together with people, and the importance of controlling this so we can move forward in the fall is so important. And I know the schools are looking at this issue even now, what they're going to be able to do in the summer as well as in the fall. And I hope we and everyone will be kept abreast of that discussion as it goes along, because I think making the case with our people that in order for things to happen in the fall, that we want to happen in the fall, it's so important that we continue the social distancing now and control this virus. And I certainly hope that we can continue to see this improvement. On the other issue, author taking this swipe at us this week, I think maybe was a way of reminding us that we better not forget that all of that is still out there with our flooding and sea level rise. I know we were just at the cusp of being ready to adopt that sea level rise report when COVID changed our direction for everything. Can we get some kind of a feel for what the next steps are? I know we had, or I think we had a deadline for accepting it. I'm assuming that we're still okay with that. But what are the next steps in moving forward on our sea level rise program? Do we need some formal action to adopt it, or just where are we with all of that?
I'll get a response to you.
Okay. Having to go back, I think we had so much good momentum with the public on that. And, you know, everybody's sort of got their attention in other directions, and we really need to kind of get back up to speed on that. I see Bobby, I think, got a feeling maybe the Planning Commission is looking at that somewhat, too.
Yes, ma'am.
Welcome, Bobby.
Hello, council, mayor, members of council. The Planning Commission will be taking up the adopting the sea level rise adaptation strategy as an appendix to the comprehensive plan. And it'll be heard on May 27, and will come to city council subsequently.
Good. Well, we need to kind of get back up to speed on that. So we're ready. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Henley. Anybody else for council comments?
Okay, Mr. Wood, you could do the agenda review?
Sure. Under ordinance's resolutions, does anybody have anything they want to have heard and not put on consent? Mr. Tower?
Mr. Wood, I don't have anything. My answer is no to your question, but I do have a comment about an item that I hope will be on the consent agenda. I'd just like to make one comment for the record and for people to understand. Is this a good time to do that?
If you want, sure.
Okay. Item 13 is an ordinance to authorize the city manager to execute an agreement between the city, the F-14 Tomcat Monument Association, and the Hampton Roads Squadron of the Association of Naval Aviation, Inc. This is, for those of you who do not know it, a monument that's been in planning for quite a while. And I think it'll be a very positive addition to the Naval Aviation Monument. We also have the Norwegian Lady located there, 25th Street. The monument tells an amazing story of the F-14, which is a very important part of our aviation history in Virginia Beach. The first F-14 was launched at NAS Oceana in 1975 and continued to serve until late 2006. And as most of you know, the Tomcat was our principal carrier-based fighter aircraft and played important roles in the American withdrawal from Saigon, the Cold War, Grenada, Lebanon, Libya, the Persian Gulf War, Operation Enduring Freedom, and Operation Iraqi Freedom. So the monument will have a, educate the public on the vital role of the F-14 in naval aviation history. It'll also memorialize those F-14 aviators that gave their lives in flight and who built, those who built and sustained their aircraft, and will be dedicated to them. I just wanted to make, tell you how excited I am about it. And I think it's a great, would be a great addition to our, to our oceanfront and boardwalk and monument grouping that are down there. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Moss?
I just had a question, because I read over the weekend, and I want to thank the city manager for providing me the extra details on the COVID stuff. But I did read all that stuff, too, twice, in fact. But that's what made me ask this question regarding the item 16, because for the more detailed regulations I read, since this was not part of our Because for the more detailed regulations I read, since this was not part of our adopted budget and approved, and so now we're, this is the item about moving resources for a public health office? Whether or not, when you read through the guidelines, and it said if you took money from reserves or contingencies, that wasn't the same thing as an approved budget, that's in that detailed guidelines. Whether or not any part of this cost that we're using from our general reserve funds would be, given the scope of what was happening for this work, could or could not be, if we didn't improve it whole and in part, could be actually funded under the CARE Act funding, given the guidelines and would allow us to maximize retention of our funding and reserve for contingencies if that in fact was a reasonable and qualifying expense.
Well, okay, that transfer, as, as explained in the agenda item, we fund 45% of the Virginia Beach Health Department, the state funds 55%. And this was a, an increase as, because their budget was increased. And I think this was an item that was actually scheduled for early March, so it, the, the reasons for the increase may not be related to COVID-19, although it may be now that many of those funds will be spent on COVID-19.
I only asked the question because when you look at the guidelines, it talks about what an approved budget means and what it doesn't mean. And they purposely excluded, if you were funding, going to be funding a cost from a reserve or contingency, that was not considered to be an approved budget item and therefore could be, if it met the other qualifying condition, was in fact a legitimate expenditure for the CARE Act money. If you've looked at it and the answer is it wouldn't qualify, that's great. I'm just, having looked at that and trying to take a, not the broadest definition because that gets you in a lot of trouble, but looking at the reasonable application, given over the course of the period, would this person performing these duties for the expenses for which we're using, independent of the state, would these costs qualify under that COVID coverage? And if it did, we certainly wouldn't want to then to use our own money because then we couldn't replace it.
I, I hear you.
And I, but, but if, maybe it's not so important, maybe that money would be better used for rent assistance to people and so therefore it's a wash, but I just thought I, I had to ask.
David, do you want to add to any of that?
No, I, I, I think that's all good dialogue. And I think the way the city manager responded is probably what I would say. And just to let council know, I, I think you saw the letter, we have just over $39 million that will be coming our way on June 1st. It, it can't be used for something that, you know, was already in the budget, I think, as Mr. Moss was alluding to, and it's for expenditures between March 1st and December 30th. So Alice Kelly, our finance director, has been kind of taking the lead as the point person and she's got a committee of budget and finance people. We're also working with Ron Williams Recovery Group because we know that assistance will, will be an important part of this. So basically, the broad categories, you could use it for medical expenses, public health expenses, payroll expenses for employees directly responding to the crisis, expenses to facilitate, facilitate compliance with health measures, expenses for provisions of economic support. We think programs like the EDIP program that was put in place, the rent assistance would certainly qualify. We're not sure that direct tax issues like the program to offer personal property and real estate relief would. So, you know, things we got to work through. Alice has been on some statewide discussions this past week. And it could also be for other COVID-type expenses. So keep in mind too, the one thing it can't be used for, and it's very clear, is revenue replacement from the locality standpoint, which is probably the biggest concern of localities. The $3 trillion program that was passed by the House, that doesn't like it's going to go through the Senate this past week or so, that does go retroactive and would change some of this for revenue loss, offset revenue loss. So a lot of issues we got to work through, but we certainly want to hear from council and engage you and certainly bring back the plan because at $39 million, this has significant policy choices.
But an important point in that guidelines was, it said you could not use it for revenue replacement for appropriate and approved revenues, but for costs that you would have paid out of reserve or contingency funds, but not explicitly appropriated for a purpose, that this was an appropriate source to fund those sources, if I'm correct.
I think you're right, Mr. Moss.
Okay, I just, I just want to make sure. Obviously, we can use 100,000. I'm sure we will have more requirements than 39 million, so maybe that's, but I'm always looking is if we can preserve our fungible money that's the most fungible, which is what a reserve or contingencies are, we're best to use someone else's money in a restrictive context to maintain our flexibility of our own dollars. And that's what I was after. But maybe this is a, maybe this isn't sufficient money to merit all that investigation, but I thank you for your answer and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Moss.
Barbara?
Yep, Mrs. Henley.
Yes, I want to make a comment and also a question. A comment on, on item eight, as Mr. Tower wanted to comment on 13. I'd like to say I'm, we were, we were all poised to adopt this reforestation policy for the city and I really appreciate all of the council wanting to be on this as support. I think this will be one of our most popular resolutions because it's something our folks really do value is our trees. And I hope that, you know, we were going to adopt this in March and I hope that we would be able to, to do the first part of that with a project this fall at the former Asheville Park property. I hope we can still do that. We'll have to work on it to make it happen, but thank you so much for that. And then a question on 16B. I make comments every time we have one of these primaries and the fact that we're taking 373,000 precious local dollars for this primary on the June 20th really bugs me. Is this only in Virginia that the localities pay for the primaries or is this a national thing? If it's only in Virginia, I certainly.
Mr. Bradley, if you can address that, please.
I would have to look into that, Mrs. Henley. I, I know how we do it in, in locally, so, and, and this is, you know, when we know these are coming, we probably need to put these in the budget too, so, but it is big dollars.
It's, you know, it's one thing for, for the official election, but for primaries, that's kind of up to the parties. And, you know, I think the parties, they spend a lot of money on elections and I, I hate to see taxpayers at the local level having to pay for the primaries, but that's just my, one of my things that I don't like. So if we could look into that, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you, Mrs. Henley. Mr. Moss.
I do know, I don't know about being every 50 states, but it's not just Virginia. In fact, in Virginia, it's any party that in the prior election garnered more than 5% of the vote, I believe it is, and the following elections are entitled to have publicly paid for primaries. There's some kind of state statute that deals with that, just so you know.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Moss. Mr. Tower.
Just to comment on that, I assume we probably couldn't have changed that before the Voting Rights Act was amended recently, but now we, now we could if, but it's a state, a state statute, certainly applies statewide, that's for sure. I just wanted to go back to Mr. Moss's comment on this money. I realize it's only a half million dollars, but I think his point is well taken. And my only question is, do we have to make these payments now? I mean, June 20th is going to be on us. I assume these payments have to, have to be made fairly soon. Is that correct, Mr. Manager?
Well, again, I'll have to rely on David. I assume that they are part of the FY '20 budget, so.
Are you talking about the public health?
Yeah, the 16 items, and I'm just seeing whether, if, if we need to pay them immediately anyway, really don't have time to examine all the, about how they fit in, because I noticed the same thing, but I, as.
I think Mr. Leahy summarized the public health one perfectly. We are a cost participator with the state. They're actually a state agency. There's some city position, a very small amount. And actually, this is something that we true up every year. Sometimes it goes, maybe in our favor is the wrong word, but sometimes, you know, we're estimating what our local contribution will be and it, you know, it comes in differently and, and as the city manager said, we would have done this two or three months ago if it wasn't for.
And I guess, well, I guess to cut through it, is there any, would it be useful at all to defer this item to, to another meeting in order to check the CARES Act regulations more?
My, my gut tells me, you know, this is something that, you know, should have been part of our budget if we would have estimated it, you know, and it's always a guess. I, I would doubt it wa, it, it could be, but we could always look into it based on, I, I don't know if Alice would agree, but based on my, my knowledge of it, I would say at this point it's not.
Mr. Moss.
Well, I appreciate the, the support and that was initially my inclination about looking, but in that I know that, that the demand, I think, for other things going forward would probably exceed the $39 million. It probably isn't a, big enough money to defer and look, but I, I just think that it's, it does just send a message that, you know, we, the council is looking for every avenue to minimize input on our reserve for contingencies because we hopefully won't need them, but if we do, it, every dollar counts. But I think the staff now is sensitive that we are looking and I'm looking forward to the discussion, Mr. Tower, on the actual CARE Act and how we decide to allocate the $39 million is going to be a much more important discussion between providing assistance actually to individuals and cash in their hands, not, rather than necessarily always trying to look first to cover our own expenses. Because I think there are a lot of people out there who have no other source for assistance other than this $39 million. So I, I look forward to that discussion, but I, I, I would, I appreciate your support, but I think we ought to probably move on, on and adopt it.
And Mr. Mayor, also, and for council, everybody should have a copy of this in front of them. And this will be item 17 on the agenda if the council agrees to add it to the agenda. And this is the resolution authorized the mayor, city manager and director of finance to execute a CARES Act funding certificate on behalf of the city. Is everybody okay putting that on the agenda?
Is that okay?
I'll take a formal vote. I do support it.
Okay. So we'll add that to the agenda. That'll be item 17. All right. Other than that, any other comments? I, I have a comment on one item that I had a question on. Mr. Berluci.
Well, I just want to take a moment to draw attention to item number seven, which is a resolution to direct the city manager to study the commercial property assessed clean energy, otherwise known as CPACE program. Much like the reforestation policy, this was a resolution that was meant to be considered in March, but was delayed due to the pandemic. But CPACE is a, an, a program that is, provides commercial, existing commercial property as well as new construction commercial property, the opportunity to access private capital in order to make energy efficiency, resiliency, or, and other, you know, flood mitigation, number of other improvements that are related to resiliency. It, it could increase the value of their property and reduce fossil fuel consumption. Generally, the program is less expensive than commercial loans and the program really could promote energy efficiency, resiliency, flood mitigation, environmental protection as well as stimulating our, our economy. And in this environment, I think that we have to do everything we can to promote economic activity as well as to keep our communities clean and beautiful. And I think this is a, a good step in the right direction to, to do all of those things. So I'm very excited about the opportunity and the discussion that's coming forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Berluci.
All right. And Mr. Solis is here in the back, I think I saw him. Yeah, the issue I have is item three, talking about the scooters and the public streets, the, the franchise agreement on that. There, there was a, a letter in our package which does not reflect what the actual ordinance is. The, the letter in the package talked about COVID responses. The actual ordinance does not say anything about when this would take effect and cleaning and that sort of thing. Frankly, the concern I have about this is the fact that there's no way to, to clean these things in between users practically. But I also noted in the letter that Mr. Solis or the city manager put out that it indicated that this would not be deployed until phase three or so.
Yeah, please, Mr. Solis, come forward.
So what I, what I'd like to do is, is ask Mr. Solis first, you know, with the, or the, the four entities agreeable to having the, the franchise agreement modified so that it indicates it would not be deployed until after phase three?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council, yes, we notified the vendors that it would potentially be phases two or three. So it would be at the pleasure of council which, which phase may best align with the deployment of the scooters in the public spaces. They also had kind of the common denominators of, of additional policies and practices that they were deploying as part of and in response to this, you know, COVID-19 pandemic conditions. So they were agreeable to do both of those things, to deploy those new practices. And then it's at the pleasure of council which phase and deploying them in the public spaces that you, you feel is best, based on what we know now. Because we don't fully have the phase three criteria or guidelines yet and we certainly don't know what timeframe that would be. So there's some ambiguity to that, but aligning it with the phase, phases does seem to make some sense, given the kind of uncertainty right now.
Well, and I guess my concern is, is just we're, we're spending a lot of time, effort and money cleaning the, the beachfront, cleaning the rails and things like that and trying, trying to keep everything clean. So if we actually control this process, I think that we need to be, be very clear that it's, it's going to be clean and safe. And I think once we get into phase three, that's when a lot of the restrictions and at least the glimpses that we've seen from the governor, governor seem to be, a lot of the restrictions seem to be markedly reduced in terms of face coverings and things like that. So I'm, I'm wondering if it's the will of the council to, to put this on the consent agenda with, with the caveat that it would be implemented in phase three, since it's not in any of this documentation that we have now and I'm curious what.
Are there any objections stipulating phase three?
Okay. So then what we'll do is we'll just say, we'll just add implemented in phase three.
Is there anything else on the consent?
All right. And so then we've added item 17.
That is correct.
And that's it, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, at this point, we're going to go into recess until 6 o'clock and thank you all for a very great discussion. Thank you.